I'm going to call to order the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School District Board of Education. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Here.
Mr. Bosch.
Here.
Mr. Heinz.
Ms. Serini.
Here.
Ms. Lewis.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Heinz is traveling back tonight, so he is unavailable to join us. So the first thing on our agenda is awards and recognition, so Superintendent Liz Kirby?
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to our February Board meeting. We are going to first begin with recognizing our Lake Erie League Coaches of the Year. We have a special group of Heights coaches with us today. These are individuals that have been recognized by the Lake Erie League for their dedication to their sports teams and persistence in motivating and inspiring students to achieve more. We all know that coaches spend lots and lots of time developing and supporting our students, and the skills that students cultivate participating on teams is not just about the athletic skill, but also the leadership, perseverance, and resilience that we learn when we participate in sports. So we sincerely thank coaches for all of the time, late nights, early mornings, weekends, supporting students. So I'm going to call the names of the coaches. I ask you to please come up so we can take a group photo. First is Scott McNulty in cross-country. And even in absentia, we can still applaud. Coach Max Stevenson, football. Patrick Gleba in girls soccer. And Teshapo Matsumi in boys soccer. Yeah, so you're going to represent all the Lake Erie League coaches, coach. Heights High students and Dr. Donna Feldman's creative writing class recently entered their short stories into a writing contest held by Young Writers USA. Three of our sophomore students were selected as winners and will be published in Young Writers USA, Mission Contamination. Congratulations, students. Again, I'm going to call their names. We didn't get confirmation that they could attend, so we'll still celebrate them in absentia if they are not here. Dailana Moore. And Mills May. Next is our MLK essay winners. Students participated in the 22nd Annual Celebration of the Life and Legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., held by the city of Cleveland Heights. They submitted original art, poetry, and essays to celebrate the life and the impact of Dr. King. With hundreds of entries from local schools, 29 Cleveland Heights University high students were selected as winners of this contest and will have their original work showcased at the Cleveland Heights Community Center. We do have a few winners with us here tonight. Eighth grader Devon Williams will read his winning poem for us.
Her.
Her. Read her winning poem for us, okay.
I have a dream. Hatred is a strain on our soul. Hatred is taught, not ingrained. Stand up for people. There ain't no place for hatred. Love is not love if it's not for all. Fear of equality is fear of what you don't know. Keep on fearing ain't gonna get you nowhere. Speak less and listen more. Martin Luther King had a dream. Are we dead or alive? You might be listening, but do you hear me? I had a dream that white and black would come together. The color of my skin doesn't make me, the way I act creates me.
But we're going to call you back up in one moment. So thank you, Devon. And students, we thank you for representing our district so well. We are very proud of the work that you all have done. When you hear your name, please come join me up front for a group photo, so Devon can come right on back. Also, Christopher Williams. Mariah Ward. That is awesome. You guys are all awesome. And Tatiana Taylor. So clearly, we have, you know, a wide range of grades represented in this contest, and we thank the city of Cleveland Heights for sponsoring this and providing this opportunity to our students. We will now take a group photo, so if everyone would take two steps to the left. Finally, tonight, we have the opportunity to recognize our Tiger Team members for the months of December and January. These Cleveland Heights University Heights members continuously go above and beyond the call of duty to create a culture of excellence in our district, a key component of our strategic plan. We want them to know their efforts do not go unnoticed, as each honoree was nominated by a colleague. We have several of the honorees with us tonight, so again, as we call your name, please come and be honored in the center of the room here. From the Board of Education, Darlene Bolden and Scott Smith. From Boulevard, Lisa Hussein and Dionne Whitaker. From Canterbury Elementary, Nadine Davis and Julie Meese. From Delaw Option Center, Brad Hollum and Monique Tinsley. From Fairfax Elementary, Chanelle Owens and Sonia Senchik. From Garrity, Kelly Cooper and Amy Banas. From Heights High School, Olivia Fattica and Sean Harold. From Monticello Middle School, Angela Kirkland and Kristen Campbell. From Nobbo Elementary School. Jennifer Fuji and Deborah Barancato. From Oxford Elementary School, Tony Jeffrey and Thomas Coleman. From Roxborough Elementary School, Sarah Coyne and Trey Hopkins. From Roxborough Middle School, Marcia Dawson and Latoya Washington. So this concludes our recognition for this evening. Next, I'd like to invite up Heights High senior Damari Loretz to deliver the monthly student report.
Before I start, I just want to say that I love the CHUH school district. I've been here since kindergarten up until my senior year, so yeah. I wanted to say good evening, Board of Education members, Superintendent Kirby, and Mr. Gaynor. My name is Damari Loretz, and I am a senior at Heights High. While I am not sure where I will go to college next year, my top three choices are Howard University, the University of Cincinnati, and Clark Atlanta University. I plan to major in interior design. I want to tell you about several events at Heights High School later this month, followed by three programs that I am involved in at the school. First, the events. The theater students will produce a one-act festival of one-act plays that are student-produced, directed, and acted. These will take place on February 6th and 7th at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Both the vocal music and the instrumental music programs will host their mid-winter concerts in February. The instrumental concerts are on February 13th and 14th at 7:00 p.m., and the vocal music concert is on February 27th at 7:30 p.m. A middle school and high school Chinese New Year celebration will take place at Heights High on February 21st from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And our winter sports teams are beginning to wind down their seasons. The girls' basketball team is currently 17-3 overall and 8-2 in conference play. They are tied for first place in the Lake Erie League. They hope to make a run at a district title. The boys' basketball team is currently 13-5 overall and 6-2 in conference play. They are currently in first place in the Lake Erie League. They have three weeks of regular season play before the postseason tournament. This one team begins playoffs this Saturday at sectionals. The team had a successful season and set many pool records. This is the most successful team in recent years and has a chance at making the state meet. The wrestling team has 50 members, which is our largest team in many years. They won the Dean McKinley Invitational Meet and have a real opportunity to send wrestlers to regionals and beyond. The hockey team is young but shows promise for the future. The highlight of their season was making the championship of the Heights Holiday Tournament. The bowling team is another young team, and they are in the last week of their regular season. The team did a great job of bringing back the Black and Gold Tournament, which we host as a team fundraiser. Now, I'd like to talk about a few of the programs that are important to me. As I get closer to graduation, I reflect on how much the CHUH school district has contributed to who I am today. Specifically, I want to talk briefly about three programs that have been very important to me: Avid, MSAN, and Link Crew. I have been in the Avid program since I was in seventh grade. Avid stands for Advancement via Individual Determination and is an elective class. The program includes tutorials every Tuesday and Thursday, monthly binder checks that help me stay organized, and grade checks every quarter. Most importantly, Avid has helped me prepare for college in the future. I've learned organizational skills, time management, vocabulary, financial management, and many other skills. I've received help with the college application process and have been accepted to 12 colleges and received over more than $60,000 in scholarships. But Avid is more than just a class. It is a family. I'm so thankful for the relationships my peers, mentors, and teachers have formed with me. I hope the program continues to help others as it has helped me. Another program that has been good for me is MSAN, the Minority Student Achievement Network. It is a national program that works to close the achievement gap between minority and non-minority students. We encourage minority students to take AP and honors classes, get involved in extracurricular activities, and make sure students are on track to graduate. Our meetings also include discussions about history and current events. We talk about social justice and oppression, but also discuss the success that so many have achieved. MSAN offers a plethora of college and museum trips, which have allowed me to expand my cultural knowledge while also thinking about the future. MSAN has been another family for me, and I'll forever be grateful for the bonds that I've built with my peers in the program, as well as the advisors. The last program that I want to talk about is Link Crew. This is a national program that trains juniors and seniors to help freshmen in their transition from middle to high school. Link Crew means so much to me because it's everything I wish I would have had as a freshman. We help freshmen with organization, time management, and other skills that will help them throughout their high school experience. Additionally, we get to know them on a personal level and talk about other things they may need help with. Being in this program has allowed me to use my own experience to help others. It feels good to give back to the school. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about Heights High and my experience.
Thank you. Thank you, and congratulations to you.
Thank you so much.
I just don't know how the meeting is going to get any better than that, just saying.
Well, you're crying already, I can tell. No one signed up to speak from the audience?
I know.
That's great.
So we will move on. So the next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we all go stow away to Taiwan, please? Doesn't it sound amazing? These kids are going to learn so much.
Any further discussion? Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Mr. Bosch?
Yes.
Ms. Serini?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Wright?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment that I'd like to thank everyone for the generous donations from our community. Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
So there are a couple items that I wanted to raise to the group tonight in terms of things we've launched since our last meeting. One, we did have our first advocacy committee meeting, and given the current landscape in Ohio, we certainly see a need to make sure that we have that arm organized, because we're not, as the legislature rustles with that choice, we know that we definitely need to be in a position to be strategic in our advocacy. We also launched the steering committee for the 2025 strategic plan, and as discussed at that meeting, we see that as not a total revamp of our current strategic plan, but a refinement and a refresh of that. So we opened that meeting last week, and we have a committee of about 25 people representing different stakeholders in the district. We also held at the high school a deep audit of our attendance practices and procedures, really trying to improve the way that we support strong attendance at the high school and looking at how all the different systems and all the different roles in the high school work together towards that. So more to come in terms of the outcomes of that audit and potential adjustments to make in attendance at the high school. We're very excited to host the robotics competition that was held on January 25th. It was truly a huge event. It was my first-ever robotics competition. It was really interesting, really exciting. It was great to see all the different teams from all across the state, and I was very impressed with the students' commitment, enthusiasm, but also the hospitality shown by the staff of our district. Members of our, both members of our tech staff that are here with us tonight were also working in that competition. We had community members who were judges and supporters, teachers who were judges and volunteers, parents, students, alumni. It was a really, really, really great event, so I really credit Mr. Knopman, Mr. Hopkins for the work of that competition, and it was a great opportunity for students to have.
Liz, I'd like to also thank Alan Wilkinson, who's in the audience. He is a volunteer with our robotics team and has given countless, countless hours to that team, so thank you very much, Alan, for your work.
Thank you, Alan.
We also are continuing our work with looking at the equity between the middle schools. So we do have tentatively scheduled a meeting with students at Monticello to hear more about their experience at the end of February, and we also have, there's something I just forgot, I was just speaking about that. Oh, we also did get information back from the music teachers in terms of the music instruments. My assessment of the music program, not only at the middle schools but in the high schools, is that we do need to do a step back and probably get a smaller committee of people to do a deep dive into instruments, programming, the matriculation to the high school, because we are starting to see, not necessarily equity issues, but a need to really look at our strategy to, you know, maintain our strong music programs. So for example, we know Reaching Heights has a scholarship. How can we get more parents taking advantage of the scholarship for music? The music instruments really at both schools probably need some tweaking, but we'll need to take a step back in terms of what we replace, when we replace it, for those things that can be repaired, what gets repaired. But there certainly is the need to do that, and the teachers did indicate that. So my next step as it relates just to the music issues will be to get volunteers for a small subcommittee, not a longstanding task force, because I think this is, we want to just collect the information and use that, especially as we go into the strategic planning and budgeting process for next year. And so there's some other things happening as it relates to equity, that Monticello and Roxborough equity work that is coming up. We do have representation on the strategic planning committee of two high school students, but also one student from Roxborough and one student from Monticello. So we want to keep that, we want to make sure that we keep our eye, you know, on this. It's a part of not just like a one-time fix, but how we do, you know, how we work and plan as a district. So that concludes my report for January highlights.
And I believe we have the third and final reading of Policies Group A, so Dr. Lombardo.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is the third and final reading. We have 14 policies that the board could take action tonight, and you have those before you, so if there are any more questions that I can answer before taking a vote on these, I'd be happy to do that.
We've already been through this twice.
Well, I know, but I have to ask.
Weeks in advance, so I think it's...
So do I have a motion to consider Policies Group A?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion on Policies Group A?
Did we square away the MOU with the city police department involving the SROs?
It is currently being reviewed by their legal department, but I have been in contact with Chief Mecklenburg, and she will let me know.
So I want to make sure that the policy and the MOU talk to each other, and I'm sure they will, but I'm just reminding everybody.
Thank you, no, absolutely.
That's the only thing that I thought of when I was reading this.
No further discussion on the policies?
No.
All right. Mr. Gaynor, will you call the roll?
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Bosch.
Yes.
All right, and I'll be bringing Group B to you in March.
That was my next question. When is Group B coming?
It's coming in March.
Okay, how many?
How many policies will be in that one?
Roughly how many?
We'll probably have between 10 and 14 again for that one, is all.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Just so we can plan ahead, because we'll have lots of reading.
Yes, I'll make sure you get them ahead of time.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And now moving on to the Treasures Report. Mr. Gaynor.
Okay, so we have the five-year forecast for your consideration tonight as you approve monthly. There are no changes to this forecast from the previous forecasts. I did want to take the opportunity, though, to speak a little bit about, I know there's been some conversation about the Ed Choice short-term remedy that just happened in the legislature and the fact that that was delayed for a couple of months, the application process, and I think there's been a lot of conversation about, well, you know, will this be a windfall for the district? You know, does this mean we don't need a levy, that kind of thing? So I did want to just put out there for your consideration. I asked Sharon Roller, who's our EMIS coordinator, just, can you tell me statewide how many Ed Choice vouchers, dollar-wise, there are right now? And you see the answer there at the top: 148,410,796. So there's $150 million worth of vouchers this year alone, Ed Choice statewide. So I know there's...
Scott, this is true Ed Choice.
True Ed Choice.
This isn't Peterson, this isn't Community School.
None of those.
This is just...
Ed Choice only.
Personally.
Correct.
So it's a subset of the vouchers.
Correct. And so, you know, my thought would be, because when the question comes up, well, I'm not sure, you know, because I know that some of the legislators have said, well, we'd like to, you know, maybe we'll fund all of these. I'm not quite sure where they're going to get $150 million to do that. Again, and that's only for this year, let alone for, you know, it would be that much or more for next year and moving ahead. So then the question comes, well, you know, they mentioned $10 million in this most recent fix and what that would look like. And just to kind of put it in context, because it is hard, when you hear $10 million, you think, wow, that's going to be a lot of money, perhaps for the district. So you see the top 10 districts here further listed in the state in terms of Ed Choice dollar deduction. So you see, we're number six, you know, and we're only behind the big urban, so Columbus, Cincinnati, Toledo, Dayton, Akron. So but if you were to take our $7 million in Ed Choice deductions this year divided by the $150 million, you see the percentage there is just under 5%. So one could assume if they're going to prorate that $10 million back to districts, that we would see about $500,000 or $478,000 of that. So if we were lucky enough to see that, and I'm not convinced that we would, based on, you know, my history with the district and with the state and what we managed to see, $478,000 is not going to affect our need for a levy at all in any way. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, because I am getting that question a lot, you know, and I think that the legislature, you know, with this delay that they put in place is kind of muddying the waters a little bit and making the message a little more difficult. But, you know, schools are still funded in Ohio, unconstitutionally, because of their reliance on property taxes, by property taxes. And so, you know, the vouchers have exacerbated the situation and made the timing more frequent and the millage higher, but that's, you know, that's where we are, and the last levy was stretched to a fourth year. You know, the hope was that the millage would be less, but because of the additional vouchers we had this year, it's a little more than we intended, but the need is still there. And I don't expect in any way that anything that the legislature is going to do is going to help us out there, at least in the short term. I think, you know, we're obviously going to continue to lobby and continue to ask that they fund more of these vouchers directly, but don't forget, you know, they're not going to just make it all go away. We have $7 million of vouchers for current students. Students, when they get a voucher, they get to keep it their entire career. So the legislature is not going to say, they're not going to take their vouchers away. They're going to continue to, or continue to force us to fund those vouchers, even if they do something about any new vouchers that might happen in the next year of the biennium.
So any child who's now a kindergartner, we have 12 more years of vouchers to pay for.
All the way, absolutely, yes.
Right, less than $50,000 is meaningless.
I'm trying to dig up Larry Householder's quote, and I can't, oh yeah.
What, the one where he says the state report cards have failed our schools?
Yeah, which is what drives, I have it, I have it right here. So, okay, so we have an unconstitutional funding system that forces Ohio school districts to put school levies in the ballot periodically, okay, because it relies too much on property taxes. And here we are again, putting a levy on the ballot that our citizens have to say yes or no on, and if they say no, we know that there's going to be some ramifications. You know, we're going to have to cut about $5 million out of our budget, but the money still flows out of us into, you know, basically, you know, private and religious schools that don't have the same kind of oversight that we have. We have community members that are confused now about this Ed Choice solution that really isn't a solution. There's nothing guaranteed that we're even going to get this half-million dollars. You know, it started out in the state as, you know, a relief of $30 million, which was totally rejected by the House. I mean, we've heard on social media, we've heard community members that have basically said, just take the levy off the ballot, because you're going to get your Ed Choice relief. You know, how's that? I mean, we're being put in this awkward position. I mean, if we don't pass the levy, we have to make the cuts, and our kids are going to hurt because of that, and other kids are going to get their education paid for. And I don't want to, like, I mean, it's the law, it's legal. I mean, I don't want to demonize any student that's taken a voucher, because it is the law of the land, and we're going to follow the law of the land. But this is just going to hurt our kids.
Well, my concern is that it's unsustainable for the future.
Oh, forgot.
I mean, eventually... I mean, eventually, I mean.
Not eventually, in three or four years.
It's never, school funding has never been sustainable, which is why we have to go back to our property owners and ask for this school levy. I, I'm taking words out of your mouth, I'm sorry.
But I'm just saying that it's unsustainable, and eventually it's going to hurt even the organizations that are accepting the voucher, because it, it's like a house of cards that's going to collapse at some point. I really believe that. I mean, at some point, we're going to have to make cuts that are going to go across the board to every child who has any relationship with our district, whether they're in our schools or taking a voucher. I mean, we're already seeing that in other districts that are deeming it impractical to bus private school students. We're seeing that in other, other communities.
Okay, so, so hypothetically, and this has been asked, you know, let's say we do get a windfall, win, windfall, okay?
A 40 million dollar windfall?
No, a windfall that solves the Ed, the Ed Choice problem. Here we are, we have a levy on the ballot, you know, people are going to wait, you know, it's, you know, people have to make the decision on this levy before the state's going to act. And frankly, the state had a lot of time to act on this Ed Choice stuff. You know, you know, many who are sort of wired into Columbus are thinking this is just a delay tactic to do nothing, because there isn't a lot of political will to solve the problem. Because there's people out there that want to steer money away from the public schools, which is why this whole, which is why this whole thing was enacted to begin with, because that's exactly what's happening.
Yeah, it's been happening for decades.
Yeah, and there's people out there that are going to say, well, it's not going to hurt, you know, districts like Cleveland Heights, because, you know, the enrollment in Cleveland Heights will go down, and then you're going to get a savings. But, help me, 94, 96%.
94%.
Yeah, 94% of the kids that are using these vouchers have never stepped foot in our classrooms.
Only 90 students since 2015.
Right, thank you. I mean, this is, I mean, so we're not seeing a population loss. You know, people ask, well, didn't you, I mean, how do you react to this? I mean, how do you do your forecasting? It's like, well, kids aren't leaving our district using these vouchers, especially the new Ed Choice vouchers.
Right, we're losing money to Ed Choice, not students.
So hypothetically, let's say that we get a windfall, okay? And it's sort of, you know, so we've already, you know, let's hypothetically say we pass the school levy, and we get a windfall that sort of covers our costs. Because as we've said before, if there was no Ed Choice, we wouldn't need to be on the ballot this time around.
We wouldn't be on the ballot till at least 2023, and the millage would be significantly less.
So, but let's say that we get a bailout from the state. It just means that we would have lower and smaller school levies in the future, because, you know, I would assume, and maybe we need to commit to this, that, I mean, we're not going to be spending this money, we're not going to be increasing salaries.
Correct, I, I mean, I, I, first of all, I, as I said, I think the, I think the likelihood of that is slim to none. But if there was some relief, some level of relief, and even it wa, if, even if it was the half a million dollars that could be prorated to our district, but again, that's a one-time payment, not an annual payment, but whatever it would be, I think that the, the thought would be that that's money that would both extend, you know, the, and unless school funding gets fixed, extend the timing for the next ask and, and make that millage less. But don't forget, we even have embedded into the five-year forecast that you're being asked to approve tonight, you know, ongoing cuts of 750,000.
I was going to mention that, we still have cuts that are planned and that have to happen, regardless of the levy.
Correct.
And regardless of any funding from the states, because we've, we've committed to trying to tighten our belt year after year.
Correct.
And we have made 5 million dollars worth of cuts since the last levy.
Yeah, that's correct. Which is why we were able to extend it to the fourth. So, I mean, we're not into this to keep on putting more tax burden on our citizens.
Right. Yeah, that level of cut was to not only extend the levy a fourth year, but to make the, the millage would have been less. You know, we, we really wanted that to be less millage for this levy, and instead, because of this high school expansion of Ed Choice vouchers for this year.
Which was a backdoor deal.
That was two-plus million dollars that was not in the forecast. So that really drove the millage.
Right, it doesn't matter how often we look at a five-year forecast, if things happen in a two-week, you know, two-weeks backdoor thing.
Things change overnight, like they did this year.
Yes, they do, correct.
All right.
Without warning, without giving us any ability to plan.
Well, and now we even have less ability to plan, because the voucher period not opening till April 1, we don't even know how many students are going to apply for it. I mean, we can assume the ones that currently have it are going to apply, but we have no idea how many kindergartners, kids moving in from out of state, high, you know, eighth graders who are planning to take the voucher in ninth grade.
And it's really a risk if you do apply, because it's not sustainable. So you may start at a school that you were always intending to go to with the voucher support, and in four, five, six years, the whole system, we know, is going to crash.
Right.
So it, it positions families in a very precarious situation.
And, I mean, doesn't the state understand that, okay, so they're pulling money out from underneath us, so it dilutes us, you know, and then how can we continue to fund these other private schools? And there's only so much you get from the state, I mean, that's going to run dry. So where's all this going to go? I mean, I mean, private schools are going to hurt, religious schools are going to hurt that are dependent on these, and we're going to hurt. Nobody wins, I mean, there's just not, yeah, there's not enough money out there to cover it all.
Right, it has created a mass scale of inefficiency. You know, it used to be your public tax dollars went to support your public school district. Now you're supporting your public school district and a multitude of other schools. That is not sustainable.
Yep. Yeah, so I joke around if the levy passes or fails, but, I mean, people are going to vote one way or the other, but if it doesn't pass, we're still going to have high taxes, and there's less value coming out of our schools, the less that we can give our kids. So that's going to be good for a new homeowner that wants to move into this community, that needs to use the schools. Well, that was a sarcastic comment, absolutely.
Well, particularly when you look at University Heights, which has become a very young community. Median age in University Heights is 29.5.
There are a lot of children on the cusp of starting school there.
Exactly, there's a lot of children on the cusp of starting school in University Heights.
And whether they, you know, go to Garrity or go to Jezu is irrelevant. They need to go to a school that is properly funded and is going to, you know, educate their children to the best.
Or Canterbury.
Standards, or Canterbury.
A lot of University Heights students end up at Canterbury.
Let me see example, I mean, every, I mean, our meetings in the, I mean, how our meetings start out now, when we hear from our students and we see what's going on, and I know this board is so active, we're in the community all the time, you know, hearing things, but when we hear our kids and where the options are and the scholarships that they're getting, I mean, it's a viable place. And what kills me is, our high school got on the Ed Choice list because of data that goes back to 2012, ignoring any recent data, and it's all our graduation rates. Our graduation rate is above the state average. We worked really, really hard to increase that number. It continues to increase, you know, it's, half the schools are, or more, are less than us, and they're now taking money away from us, because we're labeled as a poor-performing school, which is not accurate.
Well, and now, 2/3 of the school districts in Ohio have a poor-performing school, because of the way the program has exploded.
Well, they've created a system that's the inverse of Lake Wobegon, right, where all the children are all above average. It's like, well, no, now all the children are below average. We just don't know quite what that means anymore.
Well, I can tell you, as a businessperson, that's what I do in my day job, it scares me, because I think, why would a state want to label 2/3 of its school districts as failing? Why would a business ever want to come to this state if you think that it's not educating its students well? It's an economic issue.
Right.
But we know, I mean.
We know it's a false narrative.
Yeah, and, you know, none of us are into conspiracy theories, but this is all driven about trying to take dollars away from public education and siphon them to religious schools, siphon them to, you know, for-profit schools.
For-profit schools, yes.
I mean, I mean, that's what this is all about.
All right, any specific questions to Mr. Gainer on the five-year forecast before we approve it, because I think we've covered the other topic.
How do we get the state to fund Ed Choice vouchers from a different pot of money, which doesn't affect public education? I mean, that's.
The golden question.
You have the answer to that, right?
I do not have the answer for it, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, I think it has to be said, though, our lobbying efforts to work on this through our, through our trade associations.
Yes.
Are, I mean, we keep on getting credit from OASBO, and.
And our elected representatives are working so hard. I mean, Representative Boyd and Senator Williams are trying their darndest, but.
I think we're definitely educating people, and I think the community and others have really stepped up and have really reached out to their legislators, and that's helping too, for sure.
Yeah, that'll be a good segue into my report.
There we go.
But first we need to vote.
That was totally planned.
Yes, first we need to vote on the five-year forecast. So, do I have a motion to approve the five-year forecast?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
That's it for me.
Okay. So on to the president's report. Beverly and I attended a Northeastern Ohio School Board's president meeting on Friday evening. It was mainly attended by us, Orange, Chagrin Falls, and Shaker Schools. There were, I think, a couple other people there. A lot of the talk was about Ed Choice, and it was interesting that pretty much when I got there, they were, the one comment that was said was, wow, you mentioned this a year ago to us, and we never thought we'd have to worry about this, and now we do. And the feeling was not very hopeful that the state would have any kind of fix. And frankly, every school district there was worried that, you know, if they're not in Ed Choice, they sure feel like they're going to be real soon, if the program doesn't change.
They will be, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I told them a year ago. A year ago, I said, you know, if you're not worried about this, you better be, because it is exploding. So that's, Beverly, do you have anything else to add? You were with me.
I mean, it was a good, it was a good meeting. We also, they also want us to host the next meeting, and we will be, I guess we'll be talking about a date for that. And it'll be, yeah, everyone is very interested in seeing the ones that haven't seen the high school, so we're going to host it at the high school.
Are those monthly or quarterly?
Those are monthly.
Not quite monthly, it's more like every other month, whenever somebody plans it, but they really want to talk about Ed Choice was one of the things that they wanted to talk about. So, and then the other thing that they wanted to talk about was levies and levy planning and levy, you know, how you, you know, they were interested in our lay finance committee and how we get recommendations from, from a lay finance committee.
Is that unusual? It would seem to me to be a really smart method for all school districts to.
Every school district does it differently.
They do.
Okay.
So, some have.
I only know this one.
Yeah, some have, you know, a levy, or not a levy, a lay finance committee, and some don't, some, you know, so they just, they were interested in those subjects. I also would like to mention that the Heights Coalition for Public Education has a funding forum on February 10 at the high school.
Yes.
I believe that is.
It's at 7 o'clock.
7 o'clock.
And is it Cup or Patterson who's coming?
That's what I have, Patterson and Patterson.
Senator Patterson is coming, which is amazing.
Yeah, and I did mention that to the school board presidents as well. I sent out a note to let them know, some of them said that they might attend.
Good.
That event. So that is it for the president's report. Are there any board committee reports?
Career and Tech Ed Advocacy Group met last week. I attended the first meeting of the Strategic Planning Committee. That was really intense, it's going to be good.
Well, from our retreat, it sounds like that's really sound, heading in the right direction.
Yeah, yeah, I think, and, and just hearing what everybody around the table thought was a main priority, really, everything sort of crystallized very quickly into things which we had already said mattered to us, and so it was good to hear that from all these different perspectives. So it's just a good reminder that we're not off track. I like that.
I will update our board, our listing of board committees from our retreat. I just haven't had a chance to do that, so I will get that updated for all of us. Any unfinished business? Any new business?
I'm going to ask, I'm going to prepare a resolution that basically sort of goes over some of the issues of why Ed Choice is hurting the school district, and I'm going to share it with our elected officials, our council members, and see if they'd be willing to pass it in their public meetings. I think, I think everybody needs to understand this Ed Choice dilemma. I mean, I, we, I know we're all in agreement on this, but, I mean, I think that's just one thing we can do.
I would like to share that whenever you have it with the Northeastern Ohio School Board Presidents Group.
Perfect.
That would be good. Any correspondence or announcements?
The Fairfax Cabaret was terrific. I had a great time.
Excellent, was it well-attended?
Yeah, it was a good crowd, it was a good crowd. A lot of high-class cello playing by children of all ages. I was impressed, the cello ruled that night, it was very good.
That's great.
Yeah.
Elementary schools.
Yeah, usually you don't get cello until middle school, but it was like, these kids are good.
The next council meeting, is that a joint council meeting? And what's the date for that?
We don't have one scheduled yet, we need to do that. I reached out to Mayor Stein, I haven't heard back from him yet on dates. I will reach out to him again, also reach out to Mayor Brennan, so we can get, yeah, you're right, we do need to get those scheduled. And I know getting on our calendars earlier is better than later.
I mean, this town is almost all full.
Yeah, okay, thanks for the reminder. All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gainer, will you call the roll?
Ms. Wright.
Yes.
Mr. Posh.
Yes.
Ms. Serini.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
We are adjourned, thank you.